This is our
She's down to half.
Work session from Monday, September the 12th, 3:30. I've asked the chief if he would to pray for us.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Father, we're thankful for each and every day that you give us to be here, Father God, so that we can do your work. Now, Father, let us do everything today that would be pleasing to you. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Good pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call. Mr. Burris? Is he on the, uh, see him?
He's supposed to call in.
Is he?
But I don't believe he has.
He hasn't called in yet?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Pope?
Present.
Mr. Lucas?
Here.
Mr. Byrne?
Present.
Yes, he is. Okay. And we, we don't have a guest speaker, do we?
Yes, sir. We have one, uh, Mr. Rusty Hall, the YMCA executive director.
Okay.
To address the commission.
Will you please come up?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I have brought before you, and you all should have packets, um, something that actually was short-lived about two years ago. Um, kind of a dream of mine ever since I've been at Hawaii here. It is a water park slash aquatics center. Well, approximately, I think January of 2020, uh, I met with some county leaders, board of education leaders, and hospital leaders about an idea of a partnership to build a water park. And what that consists of, and I gave you an overview, so I don't want to take up all your time of what that kind of looked like. But every partner I mentioned would have a role in this, where the board of education will potentially fund the pool portion of it. Where the YMCA would fund the water features that you see on your front page there. And then hopefully the county would consider a donation of land. Um, and the reason I say this is because we felt like the ultimate location for this is at Tremblin Earth, uh, rec apartment. And what you have in front of you is the exact schematic showing where we're talking about. Um, it is erected behind the high school, but right across the ditch on county property. And the primary reasons for this location, one, is it is a rec center. So what goes along with that is a water park. But also you already have built-in parking, which will eliminate costs. It also has land that is flat and free of clearing that would eliminate more costs. Uh, and I think it's something that would benefit the county tremendously. And I think the YMCA, with our aquatics background, we're ready to do it, uh, been ready to do it. Um, as you know, we have the only indoor pool from here to Savannah, and we host every aquatics event there is in Ware County. Um, and so this is a project that I bring before you, and the reason I bring it today is because Governor Kemp, just last week, released $250 million specifically for recreational upgrades in low-income areas. And I'm ready to write the grant. Um, the grant allows up to a $2 million core organization maximum. So $2 million can go towards this project specifically from this grant. Um, as I highlighted on the little overview, um, the board of education, which I have meeting with ladies at night, about possibly helping with some funding, uh, the reason they would be interested is because they use our pool, um, extensively. Their swim team unfortunately has to come at 5:00 in the morning to practice with us because that's the only pool time we have. We have a very busy pool. Um, it's only a five-lane pool. It is indoors. Um, but, and then their middle school has to come at 6:30 at night, not getting down to practice till 8:00, getting home at 8:30, 9:00 o'clock. So they would like their pool to be able to happy right off the back door of the high school, walk across, have a normal practice like our other teams do right after school. So they have a vested interest, and they have expressed interest. Um, I do know that their East Blosst is mostly eaten up right now between the cover facility and way across the middle. But we're wanted to meet with them tonight to explore other options, and then possibly help them fund this project as well. What you see in front of you, um, was the bells and whistles. It can easily be scaled down. Rough estimate was about a $4 million project. Um, however, if you turn to the second page, well, actually the third page, that is in Dublin. And the reason I bring that up is the proximity, number one, is within hour and a half, two hours of me here, so you can see it. Two, their county is very similar in size to Ware County. Um, I think they're 47,000. I don't know what our exact population is now. But their city population is around 15, where I think ours is around 13. So similarities there. That project was 1.8 million two years, or three years ago, in 2019. What you see there opens May of 2019. So the point of me telling you that is it can be done in a small community. Um, so, but the biggest thing about this is this grant that I speak of, the deadline is November 1st. So that gives me six weeks to make this happen, and then our opportunity is gone, possibly forever, at this $2 million. So all I'm, I'll say all, make it sound like something simple, but what I'm asking for the city, I'm asking the county to consider is this land that I have here in front of you, um, a partnership, number one. I think it'd be great for this community. I don't see how you actually think it would not be great to have something like this here. Is to consider a donation of this land, however, I would say contingent on the grant being awarded to us. If we don't receive the grant, don't donate the land. But if we get $2 million for the county to consider donating this land. Um, and then from there, you can only imagine, if you've ever been out there on Saturday in travel tournament, can you imagine how many people would come to this water park? Um, water parks like this typically draw from about 45 minutes away. So that's a good bit of folks coming in, eating at restaurants, such kind of things. But bigger than that, the swimming pool, we want to make to the point where it is quality enough, big enough, to host regional and state events. And when you have those kind of events, you're talking about people staying in hotels. You're talking about people being here two or three days. Uh, that would be states, uh, excuse me, high school events. I can only imagine hosting the five A state championships here. That'd be pretty dang cool. Something that you would never think of. Um, just this past summer, Cockwood built a facility, just a pool, they hosted the GRPA state finals. Had thousands of people come there for three days, and this pool here would be bigger and better than that. So there's a lot of opportunities to it. I'm talking real fast, but I don't think you want me up here for an hour, because I gladly speak on it. But I will answer any questions, and I will gladly come back. But all I'm saying at this point is unfortunately, time is of the essence. Um, because what I would like to hope happen after I meet with the board of education tonight, if they're able to, um, commit some funds one way or the other, whatever that looks like. Um, part of the grant, what really strengthens a grant is partnerships. And with that, if I can submit when I do with the grant, say, yes, the county supports us and willing to donate how much land this is. I don't even know the amount, four or five acres. The board of education is willing to commit X number of dollars. And the one piece that I left off of this is the hospital. The reason they're interested is it would free up space in our current indoor pool. They could then offer water rehab in Ware County. Right now, if you want any water therapy, you're going to Savannah, Jacksonville, wherever it may be. So there's a bunch of partners involved in this, and many people would, would enjoy the benefits of this. But I normally wouldn't be here trying to press as hard simply because we usually have time. But I see $2 million sitting out there, and I see what this project brings, and I think it has a great opportunity to, to be awarded this entire grant. Um, so I'll leave it there and see what questions I have.
This first came up, you know, we talked about it a couple of years ago. I got out, I dug out the original Tremblin Earth complex master plan that we did in the 80s, set 90s. And the swimming pool is in phase three, which is next. So it's not out of the realm of possibilities that the pool could be built, because it's already in the master plan in that same area. I support it. Um, this, the Dublin project looks about the size of St. Mary's. Maybe St. Mary's might be a little smaller.
Yes, sir. I think the only difference in St. Mary's and what you see here, if you look at the second picture, kind of that one-foot entry, water area, St. Mary's has that where Dublin does not. So it's just one more feature, and that feature's not cheap. It's probably a $300,000 or $400,000 feature to have something like that. Um, but I think that's not the only difference, but the footprint's about the same. So my $4 million price tag on the original is shooting for everything I'm asking. Why not? See what we got. And that's what I asked for when I told them to do this. Shoot for the moon, and then we'll back off what we need to. Um, and the one thing about a water park in this situation, it can be phased in. If all we can build originally is the pool and one feature, then we'll do that and phase something else in if the money's not there. But I'll tell you right now, I don't think any organization's sitting on $2 million. So I think of that, if we could be awarded that, I think that'd be a great start and gives a long wait in this water park.
The swim team in both schools are, are big. There's, you don't know it, you don't see it too much, but this, this is important and active as the baseball and football at Ware County.
There are actually more members on the swim team there than the baseball team. There's about 35, 40 members on the swim team. You don't see them because you're not moving at 5:00 in the morning like they are. Um, and they travel, we do host region. We can host region. One reason we host region is because us in Dublin, so only two have pools in the region that are, that allow for competitions. Everybody else has trains for swimming, and these other schools have to go, Wayne actually uses a backyard pool to train. Um, they, they, a doctor over there allows them to use their pool to train. Um, so we're, so we're allowed to host region, but having a pool like this would allow so states where you have enough bleachers. If you ever come to the Y, there's not enough room between the wall and the water without anybody standing, so you can't even have spectators in there hardly. This would allow that. Um, the state meet, the U.S. Swim and State meet, which is what the Y swims this past year was, is usually held at Georgia Tech. But even that's available for bid, and I can tell you that brought in just in fees alone over $100,000 of swimmer fees. So the income there, so I can tell you how many swimmers are. It only costs about $8 per swimmer to swim an event. So that was probably about 500 swimmers coming to town. Can you imagine that being here for three days? Pretty, pretty big deal, and this is what can attract it.
Rusty, did you mention about the census tract? Yeah, I don't remember.
Um, no, officially, um, it's not on the paperwork here, but basically part of the grant is there's what's called census tract, and we have to fall within that as far as the income, um, being low income. Um, I can't remember the exact vocabulary they use for it, but this site falls within that, so we do qualify. Every check mark that they, we had a webinar last week on this, every check mark we can, we can check that we do qualify um, to apply for the grant. I'll say we're gonna get it, but the good thing about it is we'll know in January. This is a pretty quick turnaround. Um, we're basically talking October 1st right now. We'll know by January 15th whether or not we're awarded $2 million.
We talked about it before. One thing that was brought out was from a county standpoint, if we did it, that this would be considered a public pool.
Yes.
I mean, open to the public.
Yes.
The Bailey Street Pool is on its last legs. Um, and we've discussed getting all activities moved to Tremblin Earth. Um, and I, I see it as a positive.
Yes, this would not just be a YMCA pool. This would be open to the public. That would be a fee. Uh, St. Mary's charges $10. Dublin's charges $10 per head. I think kids buy one under, maybe free. I don't know exactly. We have a similar price structure. Um, I have reached out to Brian Mallett, who's the, uh, director of, over in Dublin. I tried to get some questions answered from him, just what their budget looks like, what their revenue looks like. I'm waiting here back from him. If I can get those answers as well, but obviously that, if we have a pool, that would be all on us. If you're concerned, if, if we're running it, you wouldn't have to worry about if we're making money or not. It'd be on us to do it. But I feel certain this would. Um, St. Mary's, I've been here nine years. We go there two or three times a, a year with my kids. And to know that I'm having to drive 45 minutes to an hour to get somewhere, I can only imagine if something's five minutes away for this community.
So if the board of education puts money into the swimming pool, they're probably not going to want every toddler being able to swim there.
They will. This has already been discussed. Um, basically, the thing about this is the high school swim season is during the off-season. High school swims ain't even starting, it's October 1st through February 1st. So we won't even affect high school or middle school as far as, only thing that we offer during the off-season right now is water aerobics. That'll study because the heated pool, this will be a heated pool as well, but it won't be the same temperature. Um, our pool at the Y is 84 degrees. That's what they like over there. It'd be a little cooler over here, because our swimmers don't like swimming at 84 degrees. That's pretty hot to be swimming in. Um, but the only things that, and we even talk about board of education currently, if you don't know, we teach every second grader in Ware County to swim for free. Every day, a different second grade class comes to the Y. That can come over here now, have more space, can do things, can take benefit of it. And, uh, Mr. Burke mentioned that as well. So there's things that the school board can do and expand their program as well to happen this, but actually using it at the same time as public swim will never happen with the high school swim teams. And they'll have first right during their seasons to use it when they want to. All this has been discussed. The only thing that hasn't been finalized is if and can they provide any income, any money to it. So, um, I met with Mr. Byrne and Mr. Gaines the other day to kind of lay it out, and then today at 6:00, I need to them during their work session as well. Like I said, it's just, it hit on Tuesday, you know, so I'm trying to, all of a sudden, I see, my, my brain goes crazy and starts seeing finally an opportunity. And so I'm having to press forward a little faster than I hope, but, um, this is where we at right now.
How is the upkeep going to be paid for?
Well, number one, it'll be, it'll be through the fees that we generate.
It's going to generate money?
Yes.
You think it's going to generate enough income to take care of?
Yes, sir. And again, this will be back on the Y, but this is also where the board of education, and they're going to pay a maintenance, assuming, a maintenance slash lease, um, to help cover the offs, off-season stuff and the upkeep of it. But that's one thing they talked about is paying, possibly paying monthly so that we'll always have that. And the county's more welcome there south as well.
Is that parking area going to affect the other parking when that's going on?
That I can see, yeah, sure. I do know that travel tournaments are very busy out here.
Is it going to affect all the rest of it? That what the school already uses or anything?
Well, the part of it that you see right now is Tremblin Earth property, all those lines. Um, everything from, if you're looking at it straight on, everything to the right of the pool is the back of the school. So all the parking you currently see, that's Tremblin Earth parking that's rarely used because of the proximity of where it is to the fields. The fields are back on this side. But the, but the other good part about this is you still have probably another four or five acres off of Wilely Road if parking became an issue. And if parking became an issue, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's located right behind the, uh, football stands, right?
Yes. Maybe Tremblin Earth football and right out the back door of the ag center of the high.
And the concept, unless y'all have changed, or I guess it could bounce around some. The county's part of the group would be furnish the property and have use, of course, it's all public, have use of the Tremblin Earth parking.
Yes.
I mean, that would, you know, we might have to do some parking, like Chairman Drip just said, might have to arrange some parking. But that would be, and y'all would do, take care of the lifeguards, your maintenance and everything. We would just
Yeah, as I, as I sit right
equal partner.
What's that? Yeah. As I sit right here today, trust me, this could all change, but as I sit here today.
That was concept.
The contribution from the county would be land and the parking that's already there. At this point, I'm not asking for any funding from the county. I'm going to turn it down, but I'm not asking for any funding, funding from the county. The funding will come through to us, because we're also, if, let's say we're rewarded $2 million, and we decide we want to do more, the Y will go raise it ourselves. Uh, we will do the private funding. We will do those kind of things um, to make sure all that happens. And then the board of education hopefully give a little bit, and then the other part will be the hospital would then pay lease to us or rent to us to use our pool, so that would help offset, because we're not receiving that income. So there's several different pools of money that we're trying to get to come in to help cover, your question, Mr. Drip, to be able to cover all the It's been on my mind for three years. We had a conversation once, then COVID hits, and then we don't talk about it since. But I've been thinking about it ever since.
Okay.
Ms., Mr. Chairman, there was a reference to whether the school board will and can, I think was the term you used. And I, I think equally the county needs to study on the legality of, you know, donation to a private entity. Not that it's not a great idea, but just that we'll want to put some study into how best, if commissioners do desire to move forward with it, how best that should be arranged.
So you think you can work it in the timeline to do a little research?
Certainly, yeah. I understand that if we want the grant, I mean, they, and they can move forward with the grant, I'm sure, with or without the county's participation. But it would be nice, as he said, you know, to have all these community partners. But we'll definitely, if it's the commission's direction, you know, make that a priority.
And, and I'm going to go out there. I can't answer from my board at this point, but if there was a lease to the Y, if it was a hundred-year lease, where it's not actually dealing the land to us, but something that I would see, if the Y can double three or four million dollars, I don't want to bid on somebody else's property. Unless I have it for well past my lifetime. Um, so I hope that makes sense. So that should be another option.
I can think of a couple of different options just right off, but I want to make sure we know what all the different ones are, and then we'll, you know, we'll go back around.
Right. Because we don't know if we can do it or not without the school board, do we? Or can we?
I will tell you, my approach right now is, of course, I want everything. But if the school board at this time can't fund it, understandably, they may not be able to. They have a lot of irons in the fire. I'm going to go just for the pool. Uh, $2 million right now, the bath house and a 10-lane pool with enough deck space to host is roughly 1.5, that was a two-year-old, two-year-old estimate, um, so it may have changed some. But I would go just for the pool and maybe not have these features right away. And that's, again, what I'm saying is that this, we could have this one be phased in. It doesn't have to all happen all at one time. I love for it to. But we're going to go for something, and I want to go for it on this property. As mentioned briefly, I do have a private owner expressed interest. I just don't want to go on that property. It doesn't make sense compared to what this does. Um, it's in, it's in a decent location, but they don't have parking. They don't have site work done. That only does $2 million right there. I won't have anything left.
I got one question. Over Bailey Street, did that go smoothly during this swimming season? I mean, y'all have been, y'all have been managing it.
I think this is our fourth year. Each year, unfortunately, it gets a little worse, um, from just managing, just from patrons not being as respectful as we like. Um, but this past year, just due to having to do the repairs and everything, we were only open for two weeks this year. Um, by the time the repairs were done, unfortunately, had two or three fights, um, that, over there, and things like that. It's not something at this point, I feel that Y looking forward wants to continue to do. It's just, it's just not, we have teenagers over there, there's our lifeguards. We do have someone 21 or older, but it's just, it's puts them in a position that, and the, and the facility itself has been, it's pretty, you know, it's hard to maintain. It's old. Um, some more needs to be done between now and next summer, from my understanding, to keep it going. So big investments to just keep that thing going. We did offer it for free, as we always, we have for the past two years. Patrons didn't have to pay a thing. We're doing it as a community goodwill to be free, but at the same time, we just have some issues over there. Has some security concerns. Um, that's what feels comfortable this past summer.
So when will y'all let us know if y'all going to back out of that deal shortly?
And what about the, uh, security that you just mentioned at Bailey Street? You know, probably still going to have to have security here at Tremblin Earth.
Yes.
Who's going to fund that?
Well, I feel different that, number one, we're not charging over there. We didn't charge a penny for patrons to come in. With each summer, we lose between four, I say lose, we invest between $4,000 and $5,000 a year on our lifeguards each summer to be over there. That would change tremendously over here. Um, where you're charging $10 a head, if you have, something like this could probably host 400 or 500 people at a time. You're talking about $5,000 that they generate. I think I can find security by generating that kind of income. And it would be more of a full-time operation, where I would have a full-time staff at this location compared to Bailey Street, broken one to five. You know, five days a week, six days a week, camera, five days a week.
So Mr. Manager, what we need to do, just kind of let our county attorneys?
Yes, sir. Uh, let her do her, uh, due diligence on making sure we can make that arrangement work, and then Rusty can, uh, move forward on the application. Because I'm sure, like he said, it's to go ahead and try to nail down the pool anyway. So that way, give us some time to, to do the background work.
We just have to let you know, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Let them find out.
I was not expecting answers today, but again, I think the deadline is November 18th. So that's six, seven weeks from now. It will fly by, but I'll, if you would see the depth of the application, you can imagine for $2 million grant, it's not an easy grant to write. There's a lot of depth that has going into it, so sooner the better, one way or the other.
Hopefully by the next meeting, we can have something. All right. All right, thank you. We have any more?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. I've been told.
If not, we'll go through the agenda items. Bid proposal award for personal property auditing services. Now, Scott, what is that all about there?
Um, I'm, if you don't mind, I want to defer to, um, to Ms. Lampkin and, uh, Billy to speak to this so they can answer some of the more detailed questions more thoroughly than I can.
Billy, will you come up? You are Mr. Joyce. Come out and explain it to us. How you do it?
What is this?
This is, it's probably a consistent order.
What will they be doing? They want, what's, somebody, we, we award a bid, what will they be doing?
They can audit in personal property records.
It's personal property.
What is that system?
That consists of inventory and machinery and equipment. Um, they'll go out there on the site and check their records.
Is it commercial?
Commercial, yes. That's true.
Residential, like going to my storage house and see how many books I got?
No, sir.
It should be on the, uh, register.
We should already handle those.
Good.
Get all that old farm equipment, all they got out there in the woods, you know?
Farm equipment, it's empty anyway.
We're going after yours.
That's what I figured. So is this started after a consent order from the state?
Yes.
Where our ratio wasn't up to par?
The C O D was out of work, yes.
So what happened only caused it to get out of whack? Were y'all not doing your job or what?
I'm doing our job pretty well, but you know, we can't keep hell. We keep losing health, they kept going to other counties, we can get them trained and they leave.
This has a random thing, a random order, that's why, I mean. You just gonna, just gonna pick out a few randomly, do them?
It's kinda like, you 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 have to establish a criteria, a selection criteria, kinda probably the same way, which I have to, Mr. Farmer elaborate, but when you're picking employees to grow screen, you have to have one, you have a criteria, you pull probably a employee number of whatever you do, but you have to, you have to establish a criteria, and then you have so many accounts that you pull from different sizes, like you have the Lowe's and the Walmart's, then you have uh, you know, medium sized businesses, and then on down to, say, beauty shops and things of that sort, so. But that's that's how they're done, and they'll be in rotation, you'll have a set, they'll be pulled, they'll be done, then another set using the same criteria of different accounts will continue to look at.
So how far off was our ratio, I mean, for what the state is requiring?
It has nothing to do with the ratio of real property, this is a totally a separate item, but when you, when they put a consent order on, they'll get everything to go into an ancestor's office, and it's kind of one of those deals that they can't penalize your property digest by not auditing the personal property, but once you enter into a consent order, if you don't comply with that consent order, that fine will be established against the county uh for that, for the whole amount, because of not complying with everything that they have stated in the consent order. So it 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 states in there, and I think the county attorney uh will agree, that it states in there that either hire an employee or contract out, so that was the the uh, the way it was put in the order, written in the order, uh, count the same way that it was on the real property side, uh, is that the way you understand?
I like that, oh, is that anything, like, your accountant should give you your personal property, I always did mine.
Yes, sir, not everybody does.
And and they determine what the stuff's worth.
Not everybody.
I always did it for all, for forty years, I've done it, and uh, they listed all the equipment, how much I paid for it, depreciation comes down. Okay, who who's gonna be auditing that? Is he gonna be an accountant or something?
Yes, it's gonna be an accountant.
He's gonna?
It's be a farmer.
And this is to get ready for the State Department of Revenue?
This is just to be in compliance, this is something that should have been bid on years ago, and uh, it was in play up till ten years ago, only for a brief time, probably about twenty four months. And uh, at that point, the the commission that was overseeing the county at that point decided to just continue that process, and anytime any paperwork was submitted to taxpayers, basically the county backed the money and got out of it, and basically the taxpayers turned their documents over. So it basically went by the wayside.
So how much is this gonna cost? I don't see, I got valuation ratios and everything, but no price on here. Huh?
You want, you want a copy?
Is it in there? What are you doing?
Yep. That's what they turned in, that's just.
Got a copy of this?
Yeah, yeah, they do, send a book in their booth.
Six hundred seventy five.
Are you talking about right there?
That criteria?
Under fifty thousand dollars, three hundred seventy five dollars, fifty thousand, four hundred thousand, five seventy five.
Right, and if you see, I'm looking at the second page, so you got a cover page, basically we're talking about the criteria on the second page, you're looking at it, the last one accounts right through the last six accounts. So you'll see the number of the the smaller business, fifty thousand dollars or less in property, and then you get up to the big ones that are fifty million dollars.
But how much is it gonna cost the county for y'all to have this done? I still don't see it, nor where nobody still hasn't said how much it's gonna cost.
Well, it's gonna depend on how long the county funds it and how many accounts that they get done per selection every time they they do their run. So I've not, I've not been privy to this, um, I haven't seen it in hundreds of years, but this is basically what they charge to all of the accounts.
Mr. Chairman, if y'all go, I I think the page that you're on, if you'll keep flipping past that to the trailer business services proposal, on the third page of their proposal, it's just titled review consulting services.
Yeah.
They kind of give you an example of, and you can see how it works, they'll choose a certain number of accounts in the certain size. So for example, they've chosen three hundred and twenty four accounts in the range of the fifty thousand dollars, and then they're estimating um how how much there that they expect that they'll actually discover, because they do believe there'll be some amount that's discovered. So when taking into account, you know, the cost of each, um, you can also take into account that, and we don't know exactly what that number is, um, but there is some estimated uh amount that they believe will be discovered. So if you'll go to that page, you'll see what estimated amount. The following page, which I believe is page four in their document entitled review consulting services for Ware County fees for review consulting agreements. You can see based on just this number of reviews they've chosen, which is four hundred and twenty eight total, and you can see that broken out into the different accounts, they'll give you the cost per account, so the smaller accounts are cost significantly less to audit than the larger accounts. Um, and so, you know, they've got, just by the four hundred and twenty eight they've got there, I think they had a total of about three hundred and fifty thousand. Now, if you adjust those account numbers, and if you adjust the size of accounts that are audited, that will change, um, but at least I wanted the commission to see that.
So what this say?
Basically, the lawyer's saying, I'm sorry, if you look at that last page, what it's showing you on the bottom, it's showing you the cost at three fifty four, six seventy five. At the bottom, it's telling you the net revenue, so if you're investing three hundred and fifty, they're basically telling you they're gonna discover six hundred and fifty thousand, so it's not gonna cost you anything, you're gonna make money.
Other words, we're gonna gouge taxpayers again, ain't we?
No, that's.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. But I think what it is, estimated tax revenue that it would generate from the accounts that's not at the par of six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, with less T V S fees of three fifty four, county's gonna gross three hundred and twenty thousand dollars on taxes. They were just pay for itself plus give us half revenue back on the length of taxes and stuff that's not. Who's gonna pay for that, though? The taxpayers is, ain't you?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna be paying.
Y'all, y'all look at it one way, I look at it another way, taxpayers gonna pay for it.
They're gonna be paying for the equipment that they should have been paying for all along.
Right.
What happens is, you get a notice, and he says that, and he's saying he turns his in. Uh, you do have people that turn them in, but you have a lot of people that have these things that we send them out stuff every year. And all they do is write on their return, same.
Same as last year.
They don't have the same thing twenty years later that they have now, if they go out there and they have to buy a brand new bull, they're. And that money that twenty years ago, they paid ten thousand dollars for is completely different than the money that they paid that I have three million dollars for. So they really need to turn into disposal where they got rid of the other one, the old one, and then what they purchased the new one for, just like he explained, it goes into an appreciation cycle, and it gets down to twenty percent resolution. So after so many years, it's appreciated, appreciated down to twenty percent regardless.
I've got a question. So these figures, they're estimates?
Yes.
Based on the number of accounts that are audited and the amount of taxes or values they can pull out of those accounts, and then you add and subtract and end up with a final number, and that's what we would pay, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Specifically, that this company actually works in a bunch of surrounding companies or counties they did work in here, so they have for years of coffee, a lot of counties they work in, probably out of the forty counties.
I think this is the same county, nevermind the tax commissioner that y'all used to do it to, T V S. Do you think there's a lot of accounts out there that's not paying their taxes fair?
Just imagine.
I don't do, I don't comment on paying their taxes, I'm just gonna say there are a lot of returns that are made correctly of the term.
Their, their accountants did not turn it in there.
They don't.
They don't use an accountant.
Some of them, most of them, if they run a business, they got an accountant, they got, they got to get their income.
Not these smaller businesses?
Beauty shops, convenience stores, you know, you big chains, they may be, but individuals, they're, most of them are not hiring accountants, they keep their own bills.
I think the accountants, they don't give this information to the accountants, determine to us.
Yeah.
I don't have the need to come to that.
Scott, if we hired these people, how would you write the um agreement, or how do you write a proposal to take into account that it's not a bid with a fixed price?
Well, this is a proposal, and then if you award them from the standpoint of the proposal, then they'll come back with a contract, and I think that's where um the county attorney can review that contract and bring that back for approval.
And when we're choosing how many accounts there are to audit, you know, we will want to work closely in connection with the Department of Revenue to make sure that, you know, we have um chosen enough in each category that will satisfy the consent order. So we'll have to um have kind of be intentional to do that.
And how often is this gonna happen? A quarter?
About every ten years.
Every two years, every year?
What should happen is they'll they'll, this is a two year.
But to answer your question, Commissioner Lucas, there are a lot of counties that regularly contract, they either have someone on staff who performs these audits every year, and they just determine randomly, or they contract with a private group like this to perform the audits. Um, and there are some counties that do that every year, um, others.
Just to stay in compliance, so.
Just to stay in compliance, that's exactly right.
That's typically like Pierce now, they're, they've always been with this company, they've switched to another guy that does it, he actually's got an office in Blackshire, but they have a certain number of their audits every year, and it's just continues in rotation.
And why don't we do that?
Before we move.
Why didn't we in the past, they just commissioned in the past, just they don't go out and party?
Hasn't been funded, but it's been cool funded, so that's that's basically what happened.
So we're catching up, like catch up?
Like catch up.
That was the one in two thousand twelve, right?
Yes, genuinely good.
Thank you.
This wasn't mentioned when we did that consent order, in the first one, it wasn't, the personal property wasn't, was not mentioned in that. It's completely different, the other was residential, this is. They said it was in the order.
Out of out of twenty six on the consent order that you had.
Yeah, it was in there.
Yes, sir, that's what this is a copy of, and that's what it is out of twenty six.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was discussed at that time, likely what you're thinking of is they did um contract separately for the real property with a company named G Mass, and that's likely what you're thinking of, it was the real property, um, and that was a different section of the consent order, but this personal property is also was referenced from the very original draft of the consent order. But that's a different, this is a different, obviously a different company with that.
How's that coming, uh, residential?
Should, should, they're supposed to have feet on the ground next week.
I think it'd be already started by now.
Um, that happened, wait, they've already, they've been building all the schedules, internal schedules and so forth, and we're having to lock our system down. Uh, we're gonna lock that on Friday, and uh, they'll put all the new building schedules in and all that stuff, and they'll be dropping three to five people out, and they will do probably knock out about five thousand parcels by the end of the year. So and then next year, they'll be on the hot heavy, but they're working in Pierce right now, coffee right now, and about sixteen other counties.
My daughter said that office is fixing to go through, Lambs County's fixing to.
They are.
Orange County too.
They've just about threw Pierce, they dumped eleven Fraser's out in Pierce County, and they're just about done, they've done over there probably ten, twelve weeks, probably. But they had, they were able, they were the first people on the list we got in. We were, we we got in, well, they would start working on us this year, like I said, we were late and raw, and we go to county, we're already committed, had already contracted it. So we didn't get anybody else to accept the contract, they were all too busy, so.
Can y'all hire a? Personal property again? Can y'all hire one?
No, sir.
You can, you're not hiring CPA for thirteen dollar amount, but they don't work for that. You'll split into work session?
Yes, sir. Yeah, split into work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody up on it?
Care to?
The state's gonna make you do it. You have no choice.
B, let's go on, airport master consulting agreement for design, engineering and construction services.
Mr. Chairman, can we um, can we pull this off of the agenda? I've got to get an update on the contract. That's, this is, this was not the correct one, so I'll have that for the next meeting.
All right, we'll pull that now, then. Okay, we'll go to C, twenty twenty three D O T L M E G project. Thank y'all, Billy, you enjoyed it, right before.
Last thing, Mr. Chairman, we discussed having a call meeting or a meeting to come up with a plan for this paper. Um, you know, there's just a lot of money, there's other money, there's grant money available. I'm I'm still in favor of having a call meeting to discuss all this paper, see exactly what money we got, Scott. So there's some more we can pull out of some splosh, so, and just get a real plan, that's what I'm in favor of.
I'd like to bring up also, you know, we need to not spend any money until we figure out what's happening on splosh. We might need some, need money to pay for something that's gonna come up a little bit later on. I'd say, my opinion, hold off until as long as we can, I think we got to November anyway, send the list in, haven't we, last November?
Uh, January, end of January.
January?
Yeah, so you still have, once we know then, you you can have some meetings then, we can submit it.
I'd say hold on.
I think you can also ask the D O T to take your money and roll it over, I think you can do that for up to three years' worth. So if there was a three million dollar project that we would rather look at, you know, you can take that money and bank it, you just write the D O T a letter, let them know what you're wanting to do, they'll lay that money and they'll set it aside for you and say, we could, you know, make all this up to three million dollars worth, and then we have three hundred thousand dollar match, or something like you're talking about, if that was the design of the vision, what I hope y'all will do that.
I think we could wait two more months, like Mr. Commissioner Barners says.
Yeah. That'll be fine.
Thank, I agree with Ed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bur. All right. Let's go to the D alcoholic license, alcohol license application. He's asking for that. We have this in the alcohol license application for liquor, beer and wine consumption on premises licensed for measures. Lindy He Cox, D B A Mason Dixon Pool House LLC. It's at nineteen ninety seven State Street, anybody got anything on that?
This is the uh, this is currently called the station, Mrs. Cox, Mrs. Miss Hiscox is purchasing the station, and um, she's applying for her license.
Is this one to Ware and Blackshire?
This is the one right there on State Street at Ware, at the corner of Ware and State Street.
The old bar.
The old bar.
The one that keep, where they keep tearing down Devon Sense right here? The one that keep, where they keep tearing down Devon Sense right here?
I don't know if they're gonna go.
Is it next door to Engineered Equipment?
Yeah.
Which you?
It is.
Yeah.
No pool hall.
So their hands are changing again, ownership changing again?
They've been, everything in order on it, they got.
Everything worked out.
Worked out for them. It's just for the sale of it.
Just to, I guess, try to put a license over into their name? Right, you gotta get your own, yeah.
Need more discussion on it?
It's about the only thing that place can be.
Mr. Burris, you got anything on it?
No, uh, I'd say everything's, we're like as clear as towards the code department, and, uh, don't have any diswalk files among the people's plan for it.
Okay.
I think the chief's got that under control.
All righty. Not nothing else, okay?
Appreciate it.
Okay, E, managed services contract between Probate Court and South Georgia. Whatever that is.
Computer consulting engineer.
Yeah, Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, um, Judge being asked that I put this on the agenda for consideration. He wants you, you wanna speak to it, Judge?
Judge, you wanna come up and tell us about it?
This is just the, uh, contract for the IT that we submitted, that, well, we've been working for about two years now, and we got the, uh, uh, IT man to come in and talk to the board, and we got all the contract information. Our county attorney's been working with the IT man to get the contract set up, and I think they more or less did the contract, and he approved it, we got it signed, and ready to go with it. It's already been submitted into budget, and everything's ready to go, just wanted to advise all that it is set up, and I'm ready to get started, but we need some equipment.
What is this new company gonna do that our IT people can't do?
We have, uh, depended on the IT department for eighteen years, and we're ten years behind. And I know we've got new IT people, but we've already got our system set up and ready to go with this system before any new IT was hired. This has all come in after the, our plan was put into place.
But the county commission has not approved it. All these, the county commission has not approved all the changes that you've done in that office.
Well, the county commission can, can approve the budget, and we can have do our contract under our budget. That's what we're working on.
I, I think that is generally accurate, of course, the probate judge is one of the constitutional officers in the county, and so our job as the Board of Commissioners is to, you know, fund adequately to allow those constitutional officers to do their job. Um, so, uh, you know, I think it's fair to say probably ideally, in a county of our size, we would have one integrated IT system, um, served by the same either persons, persons on staff or company, so that, you know, that's all integrated. Um, but my understanding is that there's been, is it fair to say dissatisfaction with the IT services that have been provided specific to probate, and they do have, um, as many constitutional officers do, they have specific needs for their office, um, that I think Judge Bennett would say he feels haven't been met, and so he's seeking to contract with a, a separate group to obtain that. Um, to your point, Commissioner Barnard, I think, I'm not sure whether that, um, budgeting versus such a contract has been approved yet or not, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, so.
It was submitted in my budget for this, this contract.
Count Pug.
He's in your budget.
Judge, he submitted it, at the time, we didn't have accurate numbers, and the contract one wasn't approved, or we didn't have a contract at that time, so we held out, we didn't add it to it, because we weren't sure exactly.
So it's not in his budget to pay for this?
That's correct, not, not at this point.
If we have, uh, a line item in the budget.
I was never asked that it was not in my budget.
A line item for a project, if we approve a budget, that doesn't mean we're approving a certain project, does it? If it does, then I've been misinformed, and I need to reevaluate my vote.
And another thing I'm, that I'll bring up right here, like me and a couple of other commissioners just talked about, we don't know what six months from now holds, we don't know what a year from now holds. We don't know if splosh is gonna pass. We've got air conditioners going out left and right, we've got upgrades that's gotta be done, we've got fire trucks that's gotta have, I mean, it's, if we start opening up this door to do all these things, where's the money gonna come from? I mean, taxpayers can only pay so much.
Well, they're gonna pay it out in the salary for the county employees, and there's his salary, plus his, uh, the other things that the county pays for, for that employee, plus another employee, where they can pay this a lesser amount to the contractor to come in here and do it for less than what you're paying one person. Now, uh, our attorney has seen the figures on all this, and, and so has the county manager, and we can prove that it can be done a lot cheaper going through an outside person than going through the county like where it's set up now. I'm not saying that, uh, they've hired new people, and I don't know how it's gonna work, but you look at the cost of what the county has paid those employees, and what the county would pay a contractor to come in and do the same job. You've got, you're throwing away money, that's all I can say.
Mr. Branch, can we bring our IT man up front and kind of?
I've got one, one question more, Judge, if you don't mind, please.
Yeah.
I know the contract that you're talking about now, and we've talked about this before, uh, but that's, do we sign this contract on a yearly basis, do we sign it on a three-year basis, do we sign it on a five-year basis? I mean, my reason in asking in that is, I understand the numbers right now you're saying would make sense, which I haven't seen those numbers yet as a commissioner, I don't think we've even seen those, but if it would be cheaper to do that, of course, that would be something to look at. But if we sign a year contract, or say a three-year contract, this company comes back in three years, and they say, well, now this is the price now, what do we do then?
Okay, now, this contractor does Coffey County at now, and he has, he can do, he's been Coffey County for a number of years. He does our sheriff's office already, is under his contract. And, uh, he has done this in Coffey County for about eighty-something thousand a year, I don't have the figures with me right here, is what he, uh, did that county for, you know?
He does it for eighty thousand, how's that cheaper than?
How's that cheaper than a man doing it here?
How's that cheaper than one of our IT guys, so we paid him, what, forty-five, fifty?
No, that's for, that's for his whole county. Now, the, uh, the, that whole county, now, the, you can check with your IT man here, and it's, he's got another person working with him, their salary, plus the county's part of their taxes, and I mean, their insurance, and all this other stuff, and figure it out, and see where you're gonna come out the best. I'm gonna leave that to y'all now, but, um, I'm gonna go ahead and get started with my stuff, cause I've got ten, twelve-year-old computers that don't do the job, and, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Burris.
Yeah, uh, and I know this has been kind of batting around back and two, uh, now, my understanding and, uh, the regular from wrong, but the county basically approved the, uh, constitutional office budget, and once we set that budget, and once we approve that budget, then pretty much they are at liberty to do how they wanna do within their budget. And my understanding right now, this is something in addition to the budget's already been approved, so my question is this, okay, we have a new IT person, I understand that they, he has some, hired someone to assist, you know, so is this something that IIT guy, if he personally know about what's going on here, or can his department tell him what request of our probate judge?
I don't have any ideas about, uh, our new IT, I've been dealing with the situation I'm in, and trying to get all my stuff together. I know the old IT that was here was, for years, I was told, they had computers ordered for my office for the last seven or eight years, they had new computers ordered, I've yet to see one. The only time I've had another computer put in my office was when our, uh, firearms licensed computer went out, and they had to put another one in. It's still a Windows seven, you know, we are, everybody is on Windows ten or eleven now, so we're way behind by, by about seven or eight, ten years.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I guess my, my question is this right here, has, Mr. Bennett, have you talked with the new IT person, have you just had to cut out, let them know what you want, what you need, and if they can fulfill that?
Not had any opportunity to talk to him.
Well, I would, I would hope that maybe at least give our IT department a chance, and they involve out of kind of this their field of expertise, sit down and talk with them and find out, and let them know exactly what you need, and if they can do it, and if they can do it, then we can just move on in that direction. But if they can't do it, then I think that's when maybe we need to visit prioritizing that or something. But right now, I think we need to give IIT a part, department a chance, at least see if they can address your issues.
Okay, I'm open to talking with him and letting him do an evaluation on the equipment, and the, uh, labor, and how much it's gonna cost to the county to maintain it and all this stuff, if you want to do that, and, uh, he's welcome to do it, uh, but I'm still wanting to proceed with my plan to hire somebody to come in and get us going, to get us on track within the next few weeks, cause we definitely are so far behind. We, my girls in the office have to Google things off the internet to be able to print some of the forms that we use every day. So, that's how far we are behind, but whatever y'all can work out, but I'm ready to go forward. And I've submitted my budget, and it was, as far as I knew, it was approved, and if it's not approved, I'll put it up on y'all, because I'm, I'm ready to go forward with it, and we'll go for whatever we have to do, okay?
Okay, Carlos.
Yeah, go ahead. So we do have many computers that we've ordered, and so we're working on getting those over to the court, we're working on implementing their home system and upgrading it. So I'm in the process of doing that now, I've been working on that for the last, uh, three months. I'm getting everything moved from the old IT building up here to the new one, cause I was left with that in place, so I'm migrating all that over here, so that just takes time, figuring out all the systems that's over there that needs to be moved. And there's more than just core systems, there's other systems that are with the plumbing and coke, and so we're just having to move a lot of stuff, you know, and trying to get it in as quick, quickly and timely manner moved over, which I haven't had a chance to talk with him yet, that's a little bit on, on my side, but, um, I have talked with Melva, and told her the process at which we're going through, so I just need to get with him, and I tried to get with him the other day, and he wasn't in the office, so, um, I'll just get with you when I can, and we'll discuss what needs to happen, time, I'm trying to make my way.
Well, I think that would be the best approach to take to it right now.
We're, uh, we got a contract that's signed, we're ready to go.
But I don't see why, three systems, you're gonna sign a contract thirty thousand dollars for it, that doesn't make any sense. You have three systems in your office, and you're gonna have, and you're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars on three computers?
Mine and Melva's and all this is gonna be all on one fish.
Well, she hasn't said anything about her outsourcing, it's just all coming from your part.
No, it's all coming, but she's got her contract in also.
We have another contract for corporate courts from the same company, I just got in, Friday, late Friday, I opened it up.
Can you sign a contract without us approving it? I'm not voting to approve any contracts, then Carlos comes back and gives us a study, telling exactly what we need. This has dragged on for over a year.
And he didn't give you a cost, the Coffey County, if he said eighty, I saw an email from the company Coffey County, it was a hundred and eighty something.
See, that's, that's what scares me.
That's what I've heard, too.
Yeah, and what scares me is this year it'll cost this, but then, two years from now, it'll jump up, because now they've got you hook, line, and sinker, they've got you on contract, they've got you on paper, and they don't want you to walk away, so now the price is gonna go up, that's what bothers me.
Scott, what are we paying for the sheriff's office paying this company to do theirs out there?
I don't know, we talked about this the other day, and I still, up to this day, I still don't know what they pay, um, you know, top of my head, it seems like I was told.
Something a few years ago, but I don't remember what it was.
Carlos, uh, I mean, Kevin, you can't get along with him, I mean, you can't, you can't, I mean, why, if he's already under contract to do this, then you should contact him, shouldn't you?
To know what's going on, and.
I mean, we already agreed.
This has been working for two years, and I'm ready to get something done. I need computers, I needed them a year or two ago, and I haven't gotten them, and if it's gonna, if the county can show me where it's gonna benefit me and my office and the county, as far as the cost and all this, show it to me, that's all I can say.
He sound like he's, he's working toward that.
I will see it. Y'all show it to me.
Hard get his equipment in that quick.
Y'all show it to me, I've been working on it two years, now, y'all show it to me, and we'll go from there, but I'm ready to go.
Okay. Anything else on it? Carlos, you say the equipment has been ordered, it, it's all ordered, you just waiting on it to come in, okay?
And this, this is a contract that was just signed on the eighth of September.
And that's what we agreed to, wasn't it?
Right, is that what I'm looking at, this was signed on the eighth of September?
The one that's in there, I believe so, yes, sir.
Hope you're handling that, Captain.
All right. Anything else on it? Okay, we have any commission items? Any of y'all got anything?
Uh, I got one thing on the sweeper that we're looking at for the county. Mike Bruce, you got the figures of what we pay for rent last year to rent one of these sweeper versus buying one?
What kind of sweeper you talking about?
Road sweeper.
All the things that, yes, sir, in the past, uh, twelve months, we spent twenty-three thousand dollars renting one.
They what now?
Twenty-three thousand.
We paid twenty-three thousand last year for rent, to rent one of these sweepers?
Yes.
And my understanding is y'all found one in Statesboro?
For seventeen.
For seventeen thousand to buy.
Oh, that's a no-brainer.
I plan, yeah, you can buy one.
Y'all went, looked at it today in Statesboro?
Good shape?
Yes.
Ready to go.
Is it a, what, is it a county machine or a contract?
Contract machine, it's, it's, uh.
How old is it?
Two thousands, early two thousand model.
Does it got a cab on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a minus director looking at the machine? Does the minus director looked at the machine?
Yes, sir, he went with his horn.
Approves it?
Yes, sir.
He suggests that it's a good value for the county?
Yes, sir.
I do know it'd be a piece of equipment that you pretty much would use all the time, it's just not sweeping the streets from that standpoint, and the roads, but it's also when they go to clean up after a, uh, vehicle accidents.
Yeah.
But sometimes that stuff's scattered.
We're talking about a room, we're not talking about a actual street sweepers.
Yeah, it's just a room.
Yes. And it's a, um, Chairman, you might have a pronunciation, broke, is it broke? It's starting with B-R-O-C-E, broke. Um, it's starting on B R O C, broke.
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 It's a well, well-known brand and they're, they're.
What kind of engine they got in it?
John Deere.
John Deere, they got a good engine, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's within your, uh, spending allowance to buy it without county having, commission having to vote on it, correct? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more? I've got one thing, the railroad crossing that Albany Avenue in industrial park, I think I've mentioned it before. I've had some more complaints today on them holes are getting worse and worse. Albany Avenue, railroad track on industrial park. There's scapare.
All right, I will check on that. I did send an email to the company that, that does all the coordination for that to find out when that would be replaced. But I'll check on it again, I'll do that first thing in the morning.
Mr. County Manager, I got one thing, a couple, two things.
Okay.
Uh, we just paved Row Road. And, you know, we told, we had that conversation about that front six, eight feet that's G dots that we can't touch because it belongs to the state. Well, I've had three phone calls since last Wednesday, people that live that come out on that neighborhood that they're fixing to start calling nine-one-one and our deputies going out and doing police reports for knocking front end alignments out of their vehicle because every time the G doc comes in and puts the gravel and the dirt, this heavy rain we've been having just washes it right into the ditch. I mean, we're talking about six feet. So, yeah, there's, there's where the, where Row Road got.
From Row Road.
There's about six feet, the full length of the road.
They're coming back this week to start, and that's one of the things that they're willing to do while they're here. The same contractor that's doing the, uh, Changeftown Road, repairs for the Row Road, is gonna do that, so I'm hoping they can get that while they're in town.
So what, so what were the problem with it?
When they, when we paved Row Road, the county paved the county road. And it did not attach to one-twenty-two.
DOT wouldn't let them get on that.
DOT wouldn't let us touch.
It has to be built to their specs.
Yeah, it's put in with the asphalt base, asphalt binder and top of course. And Mr. Littlefield puts down soil cement and surface treatment. So those are two different contractors a lot of times. And so they had to be subbed out to somebody else. So it's been a maintenance issue for Mr. Littlefield while he's waiting on the asphalt contractor. They say they're running a lot of, uh, piling, polder mix out of the plant gears and roads. And so that's fumbled everything into a kink. That's a lot higher than normal asphalt mix. And so they're, uh, hopefully this week, Wednesday, Thursday, this week, come back to start up the Changeftown Road thing, and while they're here, we're hoping to get that taken care of as well.
Good, that'd be great. And the other thing is, we, I know Mr. Pope, Mr. Pope just mentioned it, and I'm in total agreement. Uh, there are a couple of roads that I would like to look at, but I'd like to look at the, kind of wait and see what's gonna happen. You know, until we, cause we have talked about several roads and we know there's a bunch of pavement that needs to be done, especially for the citizens that they requested. But we just gotta wait till certain things happen.
I got one quick, Brandon, do you ever check on extended walnut lane out to Cherokee? Did y'all got a look at it?
Yes, sir, um, I think from Jonathan's. The two. Jonathan, you were talking about, or maybe if you, maybe we talked to that landowner.
I did.
That they were one of these.
Oh, yeah, they, they said y'all do whatever you think you need to do.
Yes, sir, so I think that might be a way of increasing, um, connectivity in that area, giving somebody another way to get through.
Right.
We need to, uh, probably do a little closer, uh, field investigation on that and look at drainage and things like that, and what we can do to tie that in on each end. Um, I think that is way over the drain, it's all the way to.
Because that's a good, our Cherokee, from Cherokee to Blackshire Avenue.
So you have a, you have an outlet there, what about middle?
Cherokee itself has had a squelch. Right, because the road is not that.
How far is that across there, twelve hundred feet?
Yeah.
Roughly, about twelve hundred feet.
Is it better, is that one better or is Adams better? Cause we look at two.
Adams, it won't work.
I don't, I think walnut's much better.
Much better?
Walnut's a great shot.
Yeah.
Right there on, actually it's on that, uh, landline where Patrick lives and that old old sweat property right there.
Okay.
Michael, you have an estimate on that?
No, sir, I have to.
Or, or Brandon?
I have to run that length and see, um, I'll try to get your number before the meeting, Commissioner.
Man, uh.
Mr. Brandon, can I get with you? Maybe tomorrow? Or Mr. Brooks? Because they're, you know, we got the bridge has already been approved, Jamestown, the one I'm referring to. But I live in that neighborhood, just like several of us do. I think we're gonna run into some issues. I mean, when you talk, when, when, we had a train backed up the other day with three cars come off of. And there was a train sat on that track for almost six hours. And then what you're running into is you're running into people coming down from Cherokee towards Waycona, which is basically a one-lane road. Then you're gonna have people trying to come out the back end of Frontier Estates on ABC Avenue. You got a train there blocked. I mean, you got traffic backed up that's going east and west all the way to Dorothy Street. I mean, I, I think, I think we're gonna, we're fixing to open a can.
That's why we need walnut opened up all the way through. Where it is shooting up traffic out into town.
But what you, what you're gonna run into is you're gonna run into a bottleneck because ABC on one side is just a one lane.
No, it won't even go, it won't even go to ABC. They hit walnut, they take walnut to Monroe Street, Monroe Street to Blackshire Avenue. Then you got all the city streets that they can go into town.
There's only, if those people come out of Jamestown across that bridge, damn, but one way to get out of that neighborhood, that's ABC Avenue.
ABC Avenue, you got steps and, steps and drive, then you got Bessie and Bessie.
Y'all need to, uh, go drink a beer and settle that one. Let's move on.
Coca-Cola, my boo.
Yeah. Go around.
Any more commission item?
Go around the damn front.
County manager's report.
I don't, I was gonna mention about, uh, Jamestown Highway, about the, uh, repair. They're supposed to start on that Wednesday, you said?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, I was just gonna mention that, yes, sir.
Okay. Are you at most of the journey?
I'll make a motion.
So I got, so I got.
We can go get a beer.
I'll get a favor.
Not a beer, get toast.
That was funny.